That are put on it by the city of Fort Myers, which is in charge of the building codes. And it's your infrastructure that's being damaged and used. So I just would like to push that we somehow come up with some controls with our engineering firm to ensure proper documentation is available and that codes are enforced correctly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we were out there, I actually met Joe at a pre-construction conference, and several of the things they said they were going to do, notify the residents, among them, they did not. They are, however, paying for the 675 gallons, you could track how much water leak, they're covering that, and we bill them for that time of us going out after hours to fix that leak and also replace the pumps.
Do we have an agreement in our permit pressure manual that they pay, maybe in Lennar, for any developer, pay so much per lot for us to incur inspection fees on these projects?
Well, inspection fees are typically done with vertical construction and up to the point of when they-
Nothing going underground?
Well, it's not, once it's accepted and conveyed, you know, to the district, at that point, this is kind of after the fact work, that when they went in and, you know, put a sidewalk in in front of four lots only and it caused them to move some signs, caused them to move a couple fire hydrants and other services.
They're also moving trees, believe it or not, because where they want to put the trees, they had to relocate trees, any place in the front yard is against city codes, so they, actually, the neighbors have agreed to let them put them in the backyard because they're required to have trees in the lot.
Who is here?
Ron Worley, Hampton Park. Good afternoon, Ron Worley, Hampton Park HOA. You may remember that on May the 3rd, the chairwoman asked that myself and Jim Brand help out with getting the easements settled for the Bell Crescent homes, 36 of them, where the flat does not have an easement for drainage. And so Lennar agreed to have their lawyer draw up the document, it was sent to Mr. Pierce, and then Mr. Pierce modified it, and that language that he modified to is not accepted. So it just sat there, nothing happened. The turnover of the HOA to the homeowners occurred on July 31st, and then I was informed by Lennar's lawyer that they should no longer represent the HOA. Prior to that, of course, the HOA was represented by Lennar's lawyer because they were in control of it. So bottom line is, Mr. Pierce didn't respond to my request to discuss this. So we, two weeks ago, hired our lawyer, GADC, Richard DeBose, and last week I turned this over to him. He sent his responses to Mr. Pierce on Tuesday of this week. Now, my request is that we're having our annual meeting on October the 22nd, and I'd like to be able to tell our homeowners that all of the stormwater issues have been resolved. And there's two CBD meetings between now and then, and that is October the 4th and October the 18th. Could we please get the lawyers to resolve this? You guys work on your lawyer, I'll work on our lawyer. Try to get this resolved. It's only three places where the wording is, just cannot be accepted.
And in our lawyer's defense for this week is that he's out of town, so I'm sure that he didn't get a chance to respond to Mr. DeBose. Lennar is here, she'll make sure that she lets Mr. Pierce know about that.
I thought this was going to be something really simple, and it sounds to me like it has gone into something else other than 36 lots.
No, well, actually, yes, you're right, and I always read the wording that he changed, Mr. Pierce changed, which makes it such that we, the HOA, would be giving up all of our easement rights to the CBD. So whereas the titles all say "partial" assignment of easements, in this one section, he changed it where it now reads "Assigned or has agreed to assign said easement rights under the master declaration to assignee." That's given all of our easement rights to the CBD. Another place, "Assigned or hereby transfers and assigns to assignee the easement rights of assigned or under the master declaration," and it goes on and on and on. And then at the end of that sentence, to, this was struck out, "to be held by assignee in a common with assigned or." Well, again, every easement right we have in our declaration would then go to the CBD.
Yeah.
And we can't do that.
I see, I see your problems on that, I think we just need to, Lennar, will you make sure that that gets resolved, because I can see the problem there. We don't even want all those easements.
Again, yes, I mean, but we have more than just, you know, drainage easement rights, we got all these other utility rights that you guys don't even need. So I really appreciate your seeing that, and I hope that you will be able to work it out in the timeline so that I can announce on October the 22nd that it's all been resolved. Thank you.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
We're dealing with two lawyers, but we'll do our best.
If I may add, as I was talking about meter issues, you could send some customers warnings, say you use a lot of irrigation five days a week. No, we aren't. There you are, here's the times, we aren't watering, but the common areas are being watered. And when the homeowner's put in, they tap the system on the meters line to the common areas, so developers putting in three new meters and taking care of that, it's not a significant amount, but covering the water bill that went to those residents.
So private, on the private side of the water irrigation meter was tapped for the common area?
Yes. And I imagine they just put inside that common area the water-
And they did that in three places.
Yes, or hedges, some other things.
Peter Wors, the last, we have three more to go, but the last one not related to the agenda is Mr. Geppert. Mr. Geppert would like to talk about use of GS-CBD logo.
Yes, good afternoon, Bob Geppert, Palatine Reserve, and I received a campaign letter that was headed by the Gateway Services logo and all the words by a candidate running for a super office, and I was wondering if that was sanctioned by the board or even like, personally, I didn't think it was very ethical. Anyone reading what's below that would kind of take the implication that it was from the CBD. Thank you.
I believe you have an address name?
Sure. Anything that has to do with the election or election laws, we're going to defer to the Secretary of State or the Supervisor of Elections. So if anyone has an issue, that's the proper group to address it. If anyone is concerned about ethical issues as far as that's concerned, that would be for the Ethics Commission to determine as well. As far as whether or not the district has a property right, we believe it does, we're asking that you all authorize us to do additional research, and then we can report back on what our recommendations would be.
I think that would be important. I know the issue is any use of our logo. This brings up the issue, you know, we want to protect the logo for the district for any use, any business in, in, it might use it.
Correct.
And we also have new people here today, Helen Cottner and Joe and Callan who, to speak about repairs at the rec facility and the pool. And I don't know if you both want to speak on it or if you just want to have one.
Just take it.
Come on, everyone.
Take the other one.
Cool contention here.
We do, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, from the water aerobics program. I'm Helen Cottner from Hampton Park, and I am speaking to your agenda item repair on behalf of the recreational facility. Let me first say, I was very pleased when I came in to see that this document was out there for all of you, and thank you very much, Chris, he's really zeroed in on all those concerns that we have. I just want to let you know that we as swimmers, and I as one who goes three days a week and several others to a Gateway Community Pool event, water aerobics, the class is run by a volunteer, and there are as many as, I should say, as few as 15, as many as 30 to 40 in each one of our classes, again, three days a week. We'll be concerned about Saturday with the rain. The damage is from-
So what time is the, what time is the class?
What time is the class?
Yeah.
It's from 9:30 to 10:30, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and while we're there-
Monday, Thursday, Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Saturday.
There they are. Monday, Thursday, Saturday, excuse me. While we are there for an hour doing our workout, there are others who are doing lap swimming, and there are families who are coming and going while we are swimming, and they're enjoying the, the common pool also. Damage from Hurricane Irma has yet to be repaired. The showers in the main building need repair desperately. The floor tiles are raised and some are broken. They're covered with rubber mesh, causing a very scary trip hazard. And we have fellows and ladies here who don't want a trip and fall at our ages. During the hour class, oh, as I said, there are others too using the systems. I understand that the new headquarters building will be built on this location in the future, and we would like to see that the pool and its existing facilities be brought up to date as you consider expanding other facilities within that ground. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Margaret, a question on that. Chris, how much of this damage, I wonder if I can look at some of this, it looks to me, a lot of this is chlorine related. It's chlorine related. I've got the same thing on my desk, but on I, and I mean, it's like my, I don't even have chlorine, I have salt water. But the issue is that these look, these pictures, just say chlorine all over.
Chlorine 20 years.
We go and spend, yeah, and 20 years in neglect. We go and fix this, and I know we're going to talk later on about several thousands of dollars spending out there that we have in the budget. Let's go to keep it from happening again.
We would hope to have a more effective maintenance program. When you see a little of that starting, you hit it with a wire brush and hit it with a little piece of spray paint, keep that from starting, because once it reaches into the structure, then it's hard to stop it. And we're also, we've also moved the chlorine tank, it's outside, and we might move that pump outside.
Who's, do we have a maintenance person? I didn't know we had a maintenance person.
No, typically, over the years, the pool staff up there-
They, they perform maintenance?
Well, they have, and it might be a little lacking, but we've also, we're starting to send a little more accountability with them there with the time spent, and also we're using some of our utility crew because they're familiar with chlorine and pumps and pipes to go up there and do some work.
Is, is there any way to separate the chlorine, if we're going to do these improvements, to separate the chlorine from the structure?
Well, we're bringing, we're bringing it outside, and we're just going to pull a little fence and put clothes over it so it's not in there, so that will keep it from happening to that facility. But the other ones, it's just the proximity of the pool itself and 20 years of, you know, once it's started. And what it has, the maintenance up there has been neglected, if it would have been done a lot of crap-
That number two is chlorine.
This is on the agenda, so we're getting a little detail on it. When we get to the pool. I know you wanted to make a comment about the HOAs and POAs and the common ones.
Oh, yeah.
If you'd like.
Yeah, just real quickly, the deal down at Worthington, and there's, there's four of them really, there's Worthington Office Park, there is Fairway Lakes Office Park, there is West Links Office Park, and there was also the Town Lakes. Now, we have an agreement with Town Lakes that they, years ago, turned over their facilities and they're being maintained by us, and we're billing them for it. So Town Lakes is kind of out of the picture that we've solved them, but the way we solved it would be a solution for the rest of them. I finally was able to get ahold of the registered agent, I've got a lot of phone calls to Jacksonville, the registered agent of the Worthington Commerce Park POA, and his name is John Ibock, and he is in the process of getting back to me with the phone numbers of the two, there's only two directors that were in that defunct deal. The third one has already sent in the paperwork and got himself out of it. So as Tony indicated before, one of those directors needs to sign off on a quitclaim deed if we're going to go this route. So what I would like to do is, when we talk about this later, is give this information to you, Chris, and then I will let Ibock talk to you, and then get the name, and then we go to this guy. But I think somebody needs to do the same thing, research, to get the directors of the other two, Fairway Lakes Office Park and West Links, and do the same thing, and do the same thing. This isn't that difficult, but chasing these down is a pain in the neck. I was on the phone for over an hour and a half to Jacksonville yesterday, calling, that they, they know they're being checked, because they have no phones. I think they're trying to hide from it, but this registered agent, it's his duty to locate them for us so that we can make contact. So I'll give this to Chris and let him take it from here and chase these down. I think at the next meeting, we should have the telephone numbers and email addresses or addresses of the registered agents for each of these three POAs and get them off the run. The Daniels Preserve people are getting very tired. Go ahead on that.
That brings us to the consent agenda, which is the contract spreadsheet. Anybody have any questions regarding that? Go ahead, you guys.
So we're done with the pool stuff, right?
Yeah, sure.
We didn't even talk about it.
No. Are we going to talk about what's going on at the pool?
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Later on, the rehab of the pool is-
We'll be quiet till then.
The time the speaking address is signing the card and do it, when we bring the agenda up for board action, there's not public input at that time.
We'll hear what they have to say, though.
Yeah, we'll hear what you have to say, there's no point us to ask the questions, because we know what you're going to do.
I would just like to say that as a community, I just moved into this community two years ago, and I was one of the people you said I could say something. Community facilities, beautiful trees, beautiful rows, adequate cleanup, everybody's on top of it. Let's have the community pool represent our neighborhoods. I don't know why you guys aren't. You just passed that over, we have 16 people, they could have been somewhere else, but we came and listened to all of your agenda and our money at work, but I don't hear what you're doing at the pool. It's little things.
Putting down the agenda.
We'll help take it apart.
Yeah.
And that saves that restoration cost.
Did you get a rain?
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a question. Yeah.
They want to blame everything on the, on the chlorine. What about the roof falling apart?
That was just my question. I would motion to-
We've got a fan falling off the ceiling. It's got nothing to do with chlorine.
Where are we? The engineer's contract has been signed, approved, the fee schedule is just provided to come in.
Pressure rush to clean themselves.
That's all he needed for it.
That's just fresh shit, maintenance. Turn that thing down.
Okay, unfortunately, a motion to the second, second agenda, which is basically the contract spreadsheet, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, there, that. 4A is utilities, expenditure, I tell you what.
Like the pool?
Yeah, let's move 4C, which is the repair and rehab of the pool, to up first for our audit. Okay, 4C first.
Sure, and we had money, money in the budget this year to do repair work out of the pool, and the hurricane made it very difficult to get contractors, and some people still can't get their roof fixed, their fence done, but we did get two bids to do the work. And it's basically addressing a lot of the safety issues, the ADA issues there, bathrooms, tile, potential for injury, and we have a contract here, we made a recommendation to go with FFI Contracting Services, not $88,000 with the contingency, so we would probably be right at $100,000 on that contract. And for an additional $32,000, we could have the entire pool, the interior and exterior painted, but right now we're going with all the fixes and repairs in the bathroom room.
And to my way of thinking, because I had been out there and looked at this, this is desperately, this really needs to happen. So I'm in favor of this.
Go ahead.
So here's, we have talked about improvements on that, that Commons Park area. We've gone so far as potentially discussed an administrative building, adding additional amenities, I mean, that's something that's going to take time, we've got to plan it out. I still think we need to survey the community to really understand what the residents want and what they need before we even go too far down to even getting, you know, conceptual drawings. But here's the issue that I have with the, with the pool. One, it's a very poor design for a community, I think, and I've spent some time out there. It's a mix between a lap pool and maybe something you would have in the 70s. And I know that the, the group that goes out there and does water aerobics have been using it probably more so than anyone else. There are other communities that have their own pools, even in Stony Brook, it's even a little difficult time to do lap swimming if there's a lot of kids out there. And if you've got water aerobics going on, someone trying to lap swim, how you can do that with, with families out there swimming as well would be very, very difficult. And so the point that I'm bringing up is, if there was an improvement to the Commons Park, if we were even to phase that out, I think one of the things we need to look at is enhancing that complex just from the pool perspective to make it more, more attractive to residents, whether you live in the Greens or Hampton Park or Stony Brook or somewhere else that even has community pools. I think when you look at the volume, we don't get a lot of people out there just because there's, you know, there's no real draw to get people other than if you're using it for aerobics or even laps. So Chris, what I would look at, and even in board members, I mean, these, these repairs are absolutely needed, and I think we, we do need to spend the money to do, to do these enhancements. But I think the larger discussion is, should we look to enhance that, that area to add more value, more benefit to the community? I mean, one potential suggestion would be to, you know, potentially look at expanding or building an additional pool structure or something that is more what you'd see in like Botanical Lakes or some of the newer developments where it's more like a, I don't want to say a resort-style pool, but something that's more family-friendly, and use that existing pool for water activities, you know, putting ropes back up for lap swims. So it's a very dedicated, and that's a value to the community because you can't even go swim laps in most community pools. So my point is, we're going to spend a lot of money doing this renovation, but I think we also need to be addressing the much larger picture, which is, is there improvements that we need to make that will add additional value to the residents? I can imagine if you go out there on a Saturday, even from 9:00 to 10:30 here in the summer, you're probably not the only ones out there, you may be, but, you know, the, so that's my only comment, is as we're looking through this, is there a much larger discussion? Doesn't have to be part of, of this expenditure, but in my opinion, if we want to draw more individuals to that, to that pool area, it would have to look at some type of redesign or answer.
And, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I know we are wanting to look at the Parks and Recreation in Gateway as a whole. I think one of the reasons you may not have people wanting to go and use these facilities is the pictures we're looking at. I mean, if you use these facilities, the bathrooms, one time, you'd probably not come back, because it's, this is work that just is, I think, vital to whatever we decide to do with that area in the future. And I don't want to put this, these repairs off because we've got, we're going to come up with some grand plan of what we're going to do, because the idea of bigger facilities and more facilities has been going on for years, and the residents deserve to have this repaired and fixed. That's my sense. Please, uh-
Thank you, Madam President. I've been to the pool very, many times, and those of us who were on the board two years ago may remember that there were certain board members who were interested in closing it down.
Yep.
And we fought that off, thank goodness. And we've made some good decisions about changing the heating from propane to natural gas. We're saving $25,000 a year on that. And these, these improvements should have been done at least two years ago. I was appalled when I was out there to see what the men's or ladies room looked like. So-
These are safety issues. Safety issues, these are safety issues.
Yeah.
Sorry.
They're also, they're also, they're also appalling when you go in there and look at it. So I'm going to, with great pleasure, vote in favor of this with the, with the butt. And the butt is, to our district manager, some of these prices seem awful high. And I don't know what to suggest to do about it at this moment, but when we were talking earlier about chlorine, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, if we're going to spend this kind of money, we've got to have a, a good maintenance program to keep these, these new facilities in good shape.
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
One, isn't this a salt water pool?
No.
Okay, because I was told that's what it was, all right? Okay, the second thing is, the repairs aren't, I'm all in favor of this because I've been up there several times. However, it doesn't say like the three urinals we want to replace and the toilets. I would like them to be all stainless steel.
Be what?
Stainless steel. Stainless steel. I think that's all much more durable and much more, it's easier to clean, so I think everything should be stainless steel, I don't want to go, and it doesn't crack.
Like porcelain.
Like porcelain.
It looks like a prison.
No, but it's, in a part, in that area, it's, it would, I think it would be better and that we, it would be more durable.
Chris, you got two bids on all this stuff. We, we got two bids, and one of those bids was extremely high. Sorry, call.
And their staff is recommending the first one, the FFI, which is the $88,000.
Well, and I think another thing, if we go through this, we need to look at the, the fixtures and upgrading those, and Chris and I talked just briefly about it, you know, toilets and things that have auto flush, and sinks that have the auto flows, because that just helps, you know, not only sanitary, but it also saves on, you know, things getting turned on, not being turned off, and so any part of that upgrade or improvements, just bring the thing up to what today's standard should be.
And I agree with you, we need to look at our entire Parks and Rec and what we want to hit for the future, but I really, really want this, these repairs done. They're so bad and dirty.
I'll go along with the maintenance. We have a responsibility maintaining it, I agree with Bill. Somebody's got to be accountable and a name, who is the cleaner, so the next time we go out there, we don't have to go to one, or we don't have to go checking around because I don't know what I'm going to get. Name of the person that's going to be responsible for cleaning.
Well, everyone, if you're at the pool and you're a pool attendant, maintenance is part, should be part of your responsibility, part of your job description.
But there's one person who's hands on the work.
Seems to me they cleaned it pretty nice.
That's the only way to do it. And the second thing is, relative to any-
It's cleaned every morning.
Relative to any improvements to the pool, I would be representing to the people that I talk to, it will go down in flames to spend a nickel on doing any changes to that pool. I would say four out of five people in the community don't care about that pool. They don't care, they don't use it there. So if we're going to be doing anything that's at the pool, I agree with what Doug said at the beginning, let's do a survey of the community, find out what the community wants. We have heard several times the people in Silver Lakes, for example, that have begged, and we're over a year, but they've asked for two simple requests, pickleball and bocce ball, and we haven't done that yet. That's something that somebody is wanting and we need, but to do anything else, I'd want to get a survey, we can get a real easy survey- We can get a real easy survey put together, even if we do it through a monkey survey. And get the residents' input on that before we go spend a lot of money on that.
Then we should take a survey about people wanting to move again.
Survey period. And I have that in my super other comments. So we've got to get folks and the residents.
But anyway, the real issue is, is that we have a responsibility for maintenance and, and that's pathetic up there. But it needs to be fixed.
And that's what, I can't see building anything new if we can't maintain what we've got. I'm sorry, I just...
Can I make a... I'm going to make a motion that we...
Can we make any comments?
We think we approved the expenditure for the repair. The budget now is of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred forty-seven, plus the 10% tendencies to, and not to exceed ninety-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-two, to FFI contracting services to repair and rehabilitate the common pool.
Okay.
Question. Timeline of doing this work?
Probably get started within thirty days.
Okay, and to complete, another thirty days? What's in the contract for completion?
They're going to have a timeframe on that. I can bring it back to you because if we're going to add stainless, we might have a few tweaks in there.
You'll come up with a podium out and give us your day of welcome comment. We can't go anywhere with the rain anyway, right?
I'm Jack Jess. I use the pool almost every day. Most of us, we just happy to have the place cleaned up a little bit. I use that bathroom over by the pump building. There are no floor drains in the bathroom. If a toilet overflows, they're over there fixing it in their clothes, mopping it up. If you're going to tear that floor up, this is a like, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to put floor drains in, okay? Also, those showers, you can get the hot on the left, you can get it on the right. You can get it on the bottom. It looks like an ice pit. If you were to fall down, you could knock out your eye. It just, I just want the place cleaned up. And a door that locks on the bathroom, it's been, it's been probably three years.
I've never seen an outdoor pool facility public that did not have some type of drainage where you could spray it out and clean it.
Yeah, and I mean, I was in there today. It smelled like, I've been in outhouses, it smelled better, you know? I talked to Pete about it. He's very nice about going and fixing it. But it shouldn't smell like that. And I have never seen them over there using bleach to clean anything, including somebody vomiting it on the floor. Bleach is not your problem, believe me.
Thank you.
I'd just like to have it cleaned up, and I thank you for doing it.
What do you do out there? Do you swim or do you do the aerobics?
No, no, I swim, lounge around in the water with the guys. I swim a lot.
Well, we do the aerobics, too.
Yeah. I'd like to make one final statement. Two years ago, that was being discussed. There were some play equipment for youngsters over there.
Still there.
There were, there were rusted or something, and they got removed. They never got replaced. And I think we have a little bit of conversation at some later date about replacing something for the youngsters to be doing when they're having time out.
Yeah, I think that's part of the...
There's stuff over there that's plastic.
Big picture going forward, what we want to do after. Okay, any other comments? I have a...
Can I?
Quick, yes, please.
That was almost nine-one-one call. Okay, my name's Bill Mulroy, and I live in Hampton Park. And I go to that pool six days a week, and I'm there for three and a half hours a day. Every morning from nine-thirty, and I leave there about one. And I constantly move in that water. I'm not a lap swimmer. I'm an old man. But I do constantly move in that pool. I appreciate the pool, but I appreciate the employees that work there because they really keep an eye on us. But what's bothering me, if you look at the ceiling by that big, the big building, the roof's fallen in on the inside. They put new fans in right after the big storm. One of them's already broken. It's fallen out of the ceiling. That's got nothing to do with chlorine. So there's some stuff that somebody needs to pay attention to. And it's not the, as far as I'm concerned, it's not those people that do the cleaning and watch us. It's not their business to take care of that, right? But they do. So that's what I think needs to be dealt with. Otherwise, I enjoy the heck out of it. I love that place. I'm there every morning, six days a week, three and a half hours every morning. And there's quite a few of us that do the exact same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, and now I'm going to leave. Thank you very much.
By the way, you've got a great tan.
Well, yes, I do.
Don't get wet.
We can reject him.
Just for one second, Joey and Helen. I think that the cleaning people, you know, the people that are the moderators or whatever, the employees, I think if you gave them something nice to clean, you'd see that they take care of it very well. They already do a great job with what they have. I'm really impressed. I never see any vomited things on the floor. Maybe I just use a main facility. Maybe you don't need everyone with cord rates. But I really think that, give them something, they would be right there and take care of it. They're always working to clean the sidewalk and do something and warning you. They take care of their people. Just give the neighborhood environments a chance to see our new pool, and you'll see people come on.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move over the FFI contracting. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm going to just make a five-minute agreement.
Hey, Joe.
Joe?
Hey, Joe. I've been late. It's so hot in here. I haven't leave the water. I was falling asleep.
You know, I didn't even know he was here.
Yeah, he was here.
And that's a lap. If, told me there was swimming in the facility up here. Because if there was lap, if there was lap swimmers and the ropes were off, I didn't even know from...
This needs to exist now as a full document.
Well, we need to improve it. My point is, I wouldn't go there if I had all my... I love the water racing. Now, honestly, I would go here. I wouldn't even go to my... My point is, this is a great pool for water activities, for lap swimming. It's just not...
Yeah, I know. We had two points now to each other. I mean, all we need to do is do it. Let's just clean this up and we'll take care of it.
Is the folks on board, and those that are out there, either swimming laps or using it for...
And then they go home to people that won't stay as long because apparently the facility's set up. Yeah, I wouldn't go in the facility. You could cut yourself on it. I know, but the people do take care of it. I'm impressed. There's one gradual lady, but she'll get over it. She's... Maybe they'll...
Thanks for coming, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Did you do...
Just came in.
So I had it there. I had taken off last time.
Yeah, I was going to ask that today. So I can get my stuff set up on the new computer.
Yeah.
That was not, that was just my part-time job. But I sure did spend a lot of time at it. Put all catalogs together, build all the technical stuff for that. Then when I moved to a different company, they said the engineer department had to do it. I said, "The engineer department hasn't got a ton of work in it."
Was Tony going to fly somewhere?
Does, um...
Did you need anything done?
How many of that only tells?
No, it's not crazy.
I can run the pool pretty good.
Thank you.
Is that so much energy? Yeah, he's going flying up to Rochester.
Let me ask you a question. You made a comment that really stuck.
I made a comment?
Yeah, you proved those drawings a year ago. And that's before the houses were built and sold. Now it's all private property.
Are you talking, we're talking about the, it's like the north end of... Crado, right? Where there's like four houses that have a sidewalk?
Yep.
That was, so they, they closed out everything on the Gateway Land Development side. And then I guess when they went to go get the building permits from the city, the city said, "Hey, you have to have a sidewalk here."
Right, because all the drawing, it was all, it was all the drawing.
So they, they added one, and then they came to, they said, "Hey, we got to re-look at hydrant and something else." So we got to striping. And they showed us the plan. It's been over a year ago. It was a long time ago.
Well, we have a pre-construction meeting, and I just asked them, "What permits do you have? What notification do you give the customers? Do you know that you have trees, fire hydrants, water meters and all that to move?" And the guy from the door said, "No." Said, "You have plans to reconstruct the yards once you put the sidewalk in, like putting the grass up to the sidewalk when you take the frames out." Contractor, "No, I didn't bid on that. Not my job." And the door, "Well, we'll take care of it, I guess."
Thanks for giving that call. Yeah, I mean, what they would have permitted through Gateway is just the Gateway stuff.
They have it submitted to the city of Fort Myers.
Oh, I know. I agree. So what I'm saying, like, what Gateway would have reviewed is whatever moves in Gateway. So if you move a Gateway by a rack, we'll look at that, but as far as they're going private property.
Would you look at, look at the special sidewalk again? Because you know they did, they didn't do anything. They just very harshly sidewalked it. I wouldn't walk away from it.
No, there's not, but there's, um, there's conomal holes and there's, um...
I don't know.
Well, they don't notify the city. So nobody knows what they're doing. And when they have the reconstruction meetings, I ask the guy from R W S.
Maybe they'll, let's just say it's Joel.
It was Joel.
He said, "I've got nothing else." Come down there to meet and ask you a question more.
Well, your engineers approved it. I said, "What are you doing? I have something growing." And he just kept saying, "Everything's been taken here." And I called the city. I said, "I don't have any things to do." And finally, that's what it pays. And some of the district managers route.
Ryan, oh, that's the new guy together.
Recalibrating the furnace. Somebody's got me. I'm not sure who. I hope she's good-looking.
I mean, they, they did get him something from Gateway to do it.
Everybody thinks...
Or they didn't go up with a headline. They got to get an SIC permit, because they're right away wanting to do it.
What I'm not sure, I haven't seen the drawing.
But they didn't show any, from what I remember, they didn't show us moving a meter box. It was just a high scale.
Four meter box, three meter box.
Yeah, sure.
There's water hivers. Many were on the other side of the street.
I hope you brought a bigger size.
And that's a hillside in one yard, which to me isn't located right. It's just, it would yield in the intersection. The swimmers laughing, attention to the water.
About twenty degrees.
It freezes. I see it just... The road, the road comes up. Here, here's the dump. The road comes up and then... Well, they have, they have, part of the road goes off to the rain. The other part goes straight up into the construction. So it's an island. So on the other side of the island.
I was there this morning.
The box, the plastic box. So they have to move that. Now, that's going to be a lot of property, so I wasn't involved with that. Which means Kenny's going to have to send something out there.
I'm watching the grass.
I know it's not uncommon, but what I'm saying is, the guy was cranking the lake, putting pipes...
The one that I think we could have there and do it is big enough. My five-year-old grew out there. Pull weeds, stuff. He's only grasses, he touched the...
We got all... When they do that, if you don't have that box, they aren't there, they'll pop.
I answered, "Now, look, first level of the sidewalk on the feet. We would like to have it about a half an inch above."
Okay, Mr. Guy, he's making his way back to his chair. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. And now bring into utility expenditure for emergency bypass pumps.
Good afternoon, Attorney General Utility Manager. This is a part of the 2019 capital provision plan, which will include one portable emergency bypass pump, one fixed emergency bypass pump at the Stony Brook master station. Pipe work for the tie-in. Two paved utility easements will be cut in and two new, or utility fencing for the lift stations. The Stony Brook master station fencing is going to be quite different than the other three with the installation of a fixed portable composite bypass pump. And the utility even is going to be bigger at the master station as opposed to the Blue Stone number two lift station. And to get an idea on the easements, we've cut one easement already into the Westlake lift station, which I should, it kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. The Stony Brook master station is going to need two access pumps because we're putting these fixed bypass pumps in there. So we would need two, kind of an L, and the fencing will be done.
While we're talking about the Stony Brook pump stations, one of the gates at, I think it's the station that's at the end of Lake Sixty or just side of Lake Sixty, that after Alma, one of those posts got pushed in and it's just sort of now, it's still that way. Is there any way to straighten that back up and make it look better? Just that one post? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Flair?
I motion to approve this. The amount of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the two emergency bypass pumps, installation and integration of fixed bypass pump, and two utility driveway and lift station fencing.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, and I have a statement.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Kim. I know that this, all of this is needed. However, I'm, if, if we were to separate this out, thirty-six thousand dollars for a driveway to go back to the lift stations would not get my vote.
Two, that's two. Two, two lift stations. The thirty-six will be for two, for both, for Blue Stone and the master station.
Understood. Still seems like an awful lot of money for a drive.
This concrete?
Yeah.
How long have these drives?
They were fourteen by, fourteen one-way and ten foot back on the other.
Ten by fourteen, that's a hundred and forty square feet. Twenty by nine, twelve yards.
The one we put in, we, for the Blue Stone at the Westlake in Gateway Greens was nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Nine thousand for the one in Gateway? That's about that size?
And that's about the exact same size as the Blue Stone one. The master station is more of an L. It's going to be two.
But we're bidding this work.
Yes. Well, we'll, we'll be bidding out, bidding out the fence and the easement work, the pipe work, which will have to be done before anything is done, is with the Thompson, Thompson's recommended vendor, which is Precision, Precision Lift Station. We'll be doing that.
If concrete work is being...
Yes, the concrete work and the pencil work will be...
So where'd you get the thirty-six thousand?
Estimated.
Oh, that's efficient.
Do you say everything you can to make it...
We're asking, we're basically estimating that off of what we did with the Westlake station. We based everything off of that. That's, that's pretty much identical to what we're going to do with the Blue Stone station.
And that's a number seven budget? It's a twenty-nineteen budget. Those numbers are expensive.
I understand, but it's still, it's still cash dollars.
It's very high, yeah. Hundred and fifty dollars a cubic, or a square yard.
I mean, now you add, in Stony Brook, you're coming off quite an incline, and they're... I mean, now you add, in Stony Brook, you're coming off quite an incline, and there's some foundation work and earth work that needs to be done with that.
So it's more than just pouring hay drive.
And it's also load bearing for a heavy, heavy truck and a heavy piece of equipment to come in on.
We're swimming in a rebar in this?
We just tell me that.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? You've got your. Now, utility expenditure for irrigation and high-service pumps. I believe this is also you.
This is a expenditure for $84,000 for the two, the last of the pumps for, and the high ser, for our, of our high-service pumps, pump four and pump five, once these are, and the installation as well. This will be the final, all the pumps will be switched over. Within two or three years, we will have all pumps completely switched over with new VAP drives. This will be.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Hey, Chris, when we do these budget, these agenda items, can we just put a note in there if this is pre-approved or budgeted, you know, previously budgeted, budgeted for, just so we can look at it in a glance and say.
Budget helps to compare.
Yeah, because, I mean, I want to, I want to be able to quickly look at it and say, this, this item is specifically a pre-approved budgeted item. Or if it's not, then, then we got to talk about a funding source.
Sure, yeah, we noted the front, you know, it was in the capital improvement plan. It was budgeted, but we'll put that under the recommendation with the budget string. It's tied.
Yeah, just, just a little call out. That would be great. Thank you.
By the way, the pump station, we did have that in there and did notice.
Well, while we were on irrigation and the report that was presented earlier and the audience comment, I think that at the next meeting, Chris, let's get an answer. Because for 15 years, I was of the understanding that we, as a result of the mandate from Lee County, were under two-day-a-week lottery, period. And if that's false, we need to know that. Because we've, we've spread that around and around and around.
Sure, I've spoken to the shaffer about that, and I will check them. But during high demand times, the, the amount of reclaimed water that we use is 25% of the total. And can go even a little bit lower, so the majority of it's groundwater. So when they say augmented, they may be seasonal, but I'll talk to Lee County about that.
But following up on what the gentleman said, just to put this in perspective, because I, somewhere we're losing the math. That, that wastewater treatment plant produces about 1.5 million gallons a day. That's equal to 1,000 gallons a minute. That is if we're running it 24 hours a day, 1,000 gallons a minute. Our demand last year, and it was not even what our demand was, but it was as most we could do, is a little less than 8,000 gallons per minute. I don't see how those two work together.